I call to order the January Cav County Commission meeting.
All right. The Cav County Commission meeting is now in session. Cav County Mayor Tim Stridman presiding. Anyone having business before this commission, come forth and you shall be heard. Please silence your cell phones and refrain from making any noises in the meeting room. May God bless the United States, the state of Tennessee, and the Cav County.
I'm more after our trustee Sean Driver.
Let us pray. Father, we just love you and thank you for what you've done for us today, Father. Yesterday and forever. Father, we ask you right now to be with our meeting. Father, as we address the issues of our county, Father, we just want you to bless, bless this county as you've always have, and the cities that dwell within it, and the towns. Father, we ask you to be with all those individuals and the citizens that we represent and try our best to look to, Father. Father, we ask you to be with those that have lost loved ones this week. Father, that are going through trials and things that we just don't understand, but we ask for your loving touch upon these situations and heal those individuals and matters that we just want you to involve right now, Father. We thank you for what you do for us each and every way. Forgive us where we failed in Jesus's name. Amen.
Before we call, I would like to note that our county clerk is not here tonight. Jimmy Poses, my attorney, he showed him with COVID. After seven days in the hospital, Jimmy's mom had a vague bypass and heart palpitation. Jimmy and his mom both have COVID, so that's why our county clerk is not here with us. Ms. Perry, would you call?
Shay Blair. Julie Young.
Here.
Myron Rody.
Here.
Sabrina Carter.
Here.
Jenny Trout.
Here.
Susanna Crispoff.
Here.
Jeff Page. Scott Little.
Here.
Anita Puckett.
Here.
Jerry Echol.
Here.
Jeff Barnes.
Here.
Madette Cox. Beth Harper. Here. Bruce Malone.
Here.
Item number four, approval of agenda. Is there a motion that we approve agenda for the night meeting? Myron Rody, is there a motion? Mr. Bruce Mahoney, second. All anybody say aye?
Aye.
Or oppose?
Oppose.
Item number five, approval of minutes on December 20th, 2021. You all have a copy in your packet. Is there a motion that we suspend the reading? And approve the minutes? Mr. Young, you made that motion, and we approve the minutes, suspend the reading.
I'll say aye.
Myron Rody, second. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all anybody say aye?
Aye.
Or oppose? Item number six, financial reports. We were just showing the ones that we had in our packet, and we went to Sean Driver. Present here. After we get through with these quarter reports, is what I was thinking of. The first quarter report you had in your packet is the Fund 101. These are the expenditures. You can see the total percent of the budget. This is through December. This is 36 months of expenditures. The total is 46.38%. The next one is Fund 112, courthouse and jail maintenance. And for six months, expenditures is 43.82%. The next one is solid waste. Fund 116. Percent of the budget is 42.95%. The next one is the local purpose tax fund. We've hardly ever spent anything out of that yet, till we might could transfer for our new budget. And also debt service. The next one, drug control. Sheriff has spent about 70% out of drug control. The next fund is Fund 128, other special revenue fund. Well, there hasn't been anything spent out of that. That's our American Rescue Plan money. Where we were able to draw down half of our funds. So we have $1,989,971 that is in that account. But we have not spent any, although we have requested some to go to DTC, but we haven't rolled anything out of that. General Debt Service Fund 151. And I blame all of you. Got a copy of the debt service that was in the audit for last year. The next fund is Capital Projects Fund, 171. So that's the county general through the Capital Projects Fund. The next one is, we're discussing, is General Fund for Schools. This, the first page on that is Fund 141. As of December 31st, they have spent about 35% of their budget. And then the next page is Fund 142 for schools, that's due for the project. And then the next one is Fund 143, Central Capterri Fund. Any questions or comments?
Did you get a chance to talk to them about the questions that we had at our workshop regarding their budget?
I have, because the director is out of town. Thank you, you back in on, later Wednesday, when I don't need to take that time. The next quarter report is highways. Fund 131. You can see expenditures on highways, 1231 is about 24%. And I'll call on our trustees, Mr. Driver. If you come forward, I think he's late. Forward to the court. His court report now everybody's there.
All right, everybody have the trustees' report. I'm just late, okay? All right, from the trustees' report, this is through today, 124. First page talks about assets and our liabilities. We hit the $40 million mark today. $40,51,661.86. And we are in balance with our liabilities, and that's the funds that Mr. Tim just talked about. Page two. Page two breaks it down further, with our beginning balances back to July 1. And it is through today. This breaks down with your receivables plus your disbursements at this time. I like this comparison, or like this page as far as comparison, because you're seeing what your percentages are, what Mr. Tim just went over. Page three is just assets page. This is my page that I have to sign to turn over to the commission. Again, it starts with our fiscal year beginning balance of $35,533,280.50. Bringing up to the $40 million mark today. Page four, this talks about our property taxes that are in collection right now. I'm seeing people at the bank center, and they'll stop and look at me and say, "I gotta go pay my taxes." Well, I'm glad to see you. But anyway, at this time, 51.94% collected for 2021. We are a little above from last year on this day, but that can change in a day's time. But I will remind you that with the reappraisal here, we did increase, at the bottom of page four, you'll see that figure that I've got written, about $257,000. The difference between what I have to collect for 2021 against 2020. Page five, it shows you what percentage is collected through today for that year. We will be addressing some 2020 unpaid taxes starting February 1st. And it's one more opportunity before the taxes that are unpaid for 2020 that will go to the Chancery Court. At this time, we are about 1.5% from 100% collection. So very pleased with that, and we hope to maybe turn around 60, 70,000. That's you the average, the minimum in the Chancery Court clerk master's office. Do I have any questions as far as Mr. Tim or any of the commissioners?
Mr. Driver?
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and, before we get into sales tax, is there a motion that we acknowledge these quarter, and if we've done so far? Mr. Brandon Carter, my demotion. Is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Jerry Echol, second. All anybody say aye?
Aye.
Or oppose?
The next financial report we're discussing, sales tax. You all have a copy of your sales tax in front of you. It goes from, starting with fiscal year of July 1. This is July sales tax, going through the month of December. So as you can see, December sale tax for the county as a whole was $552,603. That was up last year. Last year, December, sales tax for the county and the home was $470,900. For the county, not included in the municipalities, outside of all the cities. The counties this year was $147,740 compared to last year, $125,299. The city of Smithville, this year, $360,692 compared to last year, $305,442. Alexandria, this year, $29,448 compared to last year, $30,151. And then Daletown, this year, $3,386, last year, $2,825. And Liberty, $11,335 collected in past December, and last year, $7,151. Is there a motion that you acknowledge in the sales tax report?
I'll make that motion.
Does anyone in the pocket make a motion? Is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Jerry Echol, second. All anybody say aye?
Aye.
Or oppose?
What was Alexandria's last year, oh, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Last year's Alexandria's tax, last year?
Alexandria's tax from last year was $30,151. Just slide. Item number seven, voting amendment. The first one is Fund 122. This is for the air program, this is the drug fund. This is $500 donation out of Harbor property owners. Debit contributions and gifts, credit, $72,000 for the air program. Line 409, I have other supplies, $500 is from the Hill Nation, from the Mountain Harbor Property Owners Association, for the air program and the drug fund. And we will have to hold on these separate, because this is a different fund. So is there a motion that we approve this budget amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Myron Rody made a motion, is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Patrick, second. Any questions or comments? Would you call over?
Julie Young?
Yes.
Myron Rody?
Yes.
Sabrina Carter?
Yes.
Jenny Trout?
Yes.
Susanna Crispoff?
Yes.
Scott Little?
Yes.
Anita Puckett?
Yes.
Jerry Echol?
Yes.
Jeff Barnes?
Beth Harper?
Yes.
Bruce Malone?
Yes.
Next one is Fund 151. This is a $10,000 budget amendment. Debit account, 82210, General Funds interest. Line 603, interest on bond. An amount of $10,000 in credit, the same account, name and number. Credit 601, principal on bond. Says the reason for the request, this was an error in the budget, and I should have been putting the principal and not interest. But this was discovered, and we got very paid some interest on bond. There a motion that you approve this budget amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Jerry Echol, make a motion, is there a second? Mr. Jeff Barnes, second. Any questions or comments?
Do we know which, which companies loans it's going to?
3,012 loan, which is the, it's going on the Westwood project.
All right, did you get everybody a copy of this, that you gave me? So it's going on the Westwood loan?
It's not going on the Westwood loan, it's just flipping money from your debit and interest, and you're putting it into principal.
So is that number reflected on this cost you?
No, that's an owe that you received.
Okay. So these numbers are not changing for this $10,000?
Not those that you have in your hand, I thought. That's all it for last year.
Okay. So since this is being enacted on 1/20/22, then there should be $10,000 coming off of this?
No, no, that's correct. It's just whenever we did our budget, $10,000 was put into long line. We're correcting our budget now.
Okay.
That didn't change, that's an overdue.
Okay, so this is correct numbers?
Yeah.
All right, we're just fixing it on our?
Fixing it in this budget.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anybody have a question? Do we have a motion in the second?
Yes.
Would you call over?
Bruce Malone?
Yes.
Beth Harper?
Yes.
Jeff Barnes?
Yes.
Jerry Echol?
Yes.
Anita Puckett?
Yes.
Scott Little?
Yes.
Susanna Crispoff?
Yes.
Jenny Trout?
Yes.
Sabrina Carter?
Yes.
Myron Rody?
Yes.
Julie Young?
Yes.
Our next budget amendment is Fund 101. The first one is an amount of $94.88. Its account name is, account number 34525, sex offender registry, and the amount of $94.88. And credit 10 other charges, $599, an amount of $94.88. And reason for request, this is restricted money for charges related to the sex offender registry owner. The next page is insurance recovery money. An amount of $13,776.53. Debit insurance recovery, $49,700. And credit, Sheriff Department, 54110. Account line, 348, vehicle maintenance and repairs. This is insurance recovery money for the Sheriff Department to repair damaged patrol cars. And I think the nine in our workshop, ladies, that there are follow-up, and you can see this form check here. The next budget amendment is state grant, $46,980, an amount of $75,000. This is money for tourists and enhanced grant that was left out of the budget in here. We mostly put all our grants into the budget, this one just didn't get into the budget. And then the next one is ambulance service. Mountain Harbor also contributed $500 to the EMS. So they're making, asking to request a budget amendment. Debit contributions and gifts, and credit to the ambulance service, other supply, over $500,000. And you can see the check on that. Is there a motion that you want to make a motion to approve all of these and go to this?
I made a motion that we bundle all these and approve all of this?
Make a motion that we approve all the budget amendments, second. Once and follow up with once, correct?
That's very good.
And Mr. Myron Rody, second. Any questions? If not, would you call over?
Bruce Malone?
Yes.
Beth Harper?
Yes.
Jeff Barnes?
Yes.
Jerry Echol?
Yes.
Anita Puckett?
Yes.
Scott Little?
Yes.
Susanna Crispoff?
Yes.
Jenny Trout?
Yes.
Sabrina Carter?
Yes.
Myron Rody?
Yes.
Julie Young?
Yes.
Motion to pass. Okay, the next budget amendment is two, deals with the Board of Education. And Fund 141, the first one is the Special Education High Cost Grant, an amount of $75,388.87. And the second budget amendment is a backpack program donation, an amount of $12,169.50. And as you can see in the budget amendments, these were approved by the Board of Education in their monthly meeting on January 13, 2022. Is there a motion that we approve these budget amendments?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Myron Rody made a motion, is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Jerry Echol, second. Would you call over, please?
Julie Young?
Yes.
Myron Rody?
Yes.
Sabrina Carter?
Yes.
Jenny Trout?
Yes.
Susanna Crispoff?
Yes.
Scott Little?
Yes.
Anita Puckett?
Yes.
Jerry Echol?
Yes.
Jeff Barnes?
Yes.
Beth Harper?
Yes.
Bruce Malone?
Yes.
Alvin?
Motion to pass. Out of my open business, adopt the resolution to establish and update the occupational safety and health program plan, define rules and regulations, and to provide for a safety director and an employee testing for such a program plan. We discussed this Thursday night in the workshop, and we had to update with the state every seven years to pass a resolution to update our safety plan. And it's got a place in here on page three. Under administration, for the purposes of this resolution, the third person that's designated as safety director of occupational safety and health. I'd like to appoint Ms. Kristy Johnson in this role. I think she would be very good in it. She's already done the safety training and program for EMS, and also for our department. We have in our budget, budget amount for safety director, we have for part-time, we have for years. Also, we would have to pay, we pay her $100 a week. And it's the same amount as our EMA director is being paid, $100 a week. So I wanted to adopt this resolution, I guess a motion needs to be made, if we adopt the resolution 2022, that's number one, that's number seven, four, naming Kristy Johnson as our safety director.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Julie Young made a motion. Ms. Jenny Trout, second.
And she isn't agreeing?
Pardon?
And Ms. Kristy isn't agreeing?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I think we'll do this, and then we'll do the pay right after this just to pay for the resolution. Would you call over, please?
And she is one of the regulars for the payments?
Yeah, yeah.
Bruce Malone?
Yes.
Beth Harper?
Yes.
Jeff Barnes?
Yes.
Jerry Echol?
Yes.
Anita Puckett?
Yes.
Scott Little?
Yes.
Susanna Crispoff?
Yes.
Jenny Trout?
Yes.
Sabrina Carter?
Yes.
Myron Rody?
Yes.
Julie Young?
Yes.
This, this person will be doing the training for the county lab?
That's correct. That's, that's correct. They can go into different places, schools, highway, landfills, courthouse complex. Divide the safety plan during training, and we do, that's correct. If we had to update a plan and name somebody every seven years. So we, I guess, improper, if somebody made a motion that we, it's in the new money, we've got money budgeted in the budget of the part-time safety person, make a motion that we pay Kristy $100 a week for this.
I'll put that as a motion.
Mr. Myron Rody made a motion, is there a second? Mr. Brandon Carter, second. Would you call over?
Julie Young?
Yes.
Myron Rody?
Yes.
Sabrina Carter?
Yes.
Jenny Trout?
Yes.
Susanna Crispoff?
Yes.
Scott Little?
Yes.
Anita Puckett?
Yes.
Jerry Echol?
Yes.
Jeff Barnes?
Yes.
Beth Harper?
Yes.
Bruce Malone?
Yes.
The next item is the foreman of the Cav County Fire Chief and Assistant Chief. This is something that's been out in January. You have in front of you a letter addressed to county mayor. The membership of the Cav County Fire Department makes January 8, 2022, for our annual election of officers. The following nominated unanimously by the membership for your approval, according to Tennessee Co-Aditating 5-17-103. In respective positions for one-year term, to end on January 31, 2023. Danny Green, Fire Chief, Anthony Boyd, Assistant Fire Chief. It is the duty of the county mayor to appoint the assistant fire chief and the chief, but the county commission needs to confirm that. So is there a motion that you confirm these appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jerry Echol made a motion, is there a second?
I'll say a second.
And Anita Puckett, second. Any questions? All anybody say aye?
Aye.
Or oppose? The next item is part of our three-star requirement. Acknowledged Audit Committee Report as a part of the three-star, we say our Audit Committee met on January 10. And Audit Committee members, county mayor Tim Stridman, Mr. Jerry Echol, Anita Puckett, Susanna Crispoff, and Tom Janey is our committee member who is the chair. We reviewed the engagement letter of understanding, and then next we reviewed the recent county audit for June 30, 2021. There were two findings, minor findings. These were discussed, the correction action plan, as part of the audit, the book findings were reviewed. And then the committee also reviewed tax balances and fund balances for, as you can see here, for the General Funds, Solid Waste, Local Purpose Tax Fund, all through the Central Capterri Fund. And I will say about our audit, it was a good audit. All funds, I think, had an increase in their fund balance. As you can see here, it's not going to be Audit Committee Report. But, you know, this is part of the three-star requirements that we have to do. Have to, Audit Committee have to make the report to the county commission. So is there a motion that you acknowledge the Audit Committee report?
I'll make that.
Ms. Patrick made a motion, is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Mr. Jerry Echol, second. All anybody say aye?
Aye.
Or oppose?
Is there any business? Is there any business, would you call the board, the commission? I have something that I need to share with the commission. You know, we, I say, we, the county's been very fortunate in the past few years to have been able to take advantage of some grants for our health department. You know, I think in the last twenty-four years, we probably have received probably close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants to be able to renovate our health department. Those grants have become available. Michael Rayling had asked me, like, letters and shit, when they did become available. And when we were awarded those grants, you know, the commission approved them, there was no matching funds for those grants at all. And, you know, you always had grants for renovation, you always wondered about grants for a new health department. Well, I got a visit late last week from our regional health director, Angel Troxel, and also our health director, Michael Rayling. They gave me a letter that was from Lisa Piercy, the commissioner of the State of Tennessee Department of Health, dated January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is addressed to the county mayor. The Cav County will be receiving, will be getting a new health department in the next few years, in the amount of ten of the league, a twelve thousand square foot health department. The total is three million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Normally, that requires a twenty-five percent match from the county. In fact, if the case, that would be a match out of our general fund of nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. But, I'll just read part of the letter. Local banking funds may come from the county's direct allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act. The department encourages this practice, assists with less burden on local general fund obligations, and aligns with an intent of the FSAG approved capital investment program. Each capital investment grant will require a twenty-five percent match, and the project's total cost, that could see ten percent of the ARPA direct allocation. So what that means is, instead of a normal match of twenty-five percent, which would be nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, we'll be allowed to use our ARP fund in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So, that would be, the state would be putting in three million, five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred dollars. And the county, if they used the ARP match, which I think would be the right thing to do, would be three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So, that is some good news. Like I said, it was late last week when I received the visit, the letter was dated January twelfth. I did not get it in an email, did not get it to mail. When they came and visited, there's five counties, and then fourteen counties off the coast, that are getting new health departments. And I had that to time to the other four work. They couldn't say until they notified those counties. But I do believe Mountain County's one of them, White County's one of them, Olentown County, and I'm not sure about the fifth. But, one thing I will share with you, and I did ask them at the time of our meeting, and Mr. Troxel, when he called to find out, this includes surveys, environmental impact statement, engineering fees, land preparation, land clearing, site prep, utilities, and that sort of stuff. So, you know, it's a pretty win-win situation for the county. Especially when you normally be putting in about a million dollars, you can use ARP funds of about four hundred of that. One thing, one thing that says, is since your local health department and regional health directors will serve as your primary points of contact for these projects, they will follow up with further information over the next several weeks. This is all I know. Like I said, I would say this information was late last week. As more information becomes available, I'll share it with you.
Does that include the sites as well?
Well, no, and that's a good question, you know, we have some property, and that's where it's probably determined, and let the state look at it. But, you know, we have some property right next to the health department, right now. And, you know, it seems to be a good location. It wouldn't take much to move from one place to another. But, you know, that's something probably since the state's gonna be putting bill, that they will probably, you can.
So we wouldn't have to borrow the property?
We wouldn't have to borrow the property to, you know, make it any better.
Mike Strickland, do you have copies of that for us, or is she out for our meeting?
Our letter, yeah.
Or email, or we can email, over time?
Yes, I'll have it.
And all of that matches for the?
That's all we have to match. They say the total project, including IT is three million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. The state expense would be three million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred, and the local match would be three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So, nobody has any other business? We'll do, out of ten notaries, notaries could be elected. Kathy Goodwin, Gady Callard-Hendricks, Jamie Hoakam, Lois Hoakam, Tracy Johnson, Jessica Lizer, Samantha Wood. Is there a motion that we personally know?
I'd like that for a motion.
Mr. Myron Rowley made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Julie Young, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item number eleven, any comments on the topic? If not, is there a motion, is there a jury?
I'll make that.
Jeff Barnes made a motion, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.